I'll call this meeting to order. Since we have a quorum here, if you'd state your name, the record is my left to my right.
Mark Ziesel.
Lyndon Novak.
Randy Brackman.
Brian Rockoff.
John Simon.
If we have a quorum, I'll call this meeting to order. First order of business, adoption of the agenda.
I move we accept, create up the agenda.
Second?
Moving second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let me state for the record, the purpose of the zoning board of appeals is to review and make a ruling on the request for the applicant that was, that they wanted to do something that was turned down by the building official because it didn't, it didn't meet our ordinances. This is a quasi judicial body, and as such, we will go through a number of proceedings. The first will be the presentation by the building official of what the application requested, what the applicant requested, and why it was denied. The second part will be a presentation by the applicant or the applicant's representatives of what they want to do and why, and why they feel they should be granted a variance. The third part will be open for public discussion and public comments. After that part is closed, the zoning board itself will have questions for either the building official or the applicant. We may do that during their session as well. And after that, we'll go into what's called a finding of facts, on which we'll base our decision. And we do a finding of facts and list those, and that, that is what we base our, our decision on. Following that, we will have motions to approve or deny, and a vote on the, on the proceedings. That being said, turn over to Bill Dinn, our building official, for introducing the-
Do you want to do your spiel?
What?
About the decision and-
Oh, basically, the decision of the zoning board is final with the exception that if the applicant disagrees with the zoning board, they have thirty days after the, after the decision to appeal in circuit court. After thirty days is gone, the decision stands. That being said, turn over to Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The zoning group of appeals case number twenty-five dash zero zero six for the property located at three oh five four two Hickory Lane, zone R one, and the request is for an in-ground pool, which, what I believe you found in your information for this evening was a little different than usual, in that I gave you a bit of a status for this property. The existing houses currently being, are in the process of being remodeled and with an addition on it. The house is on a large parcel of land. The large parcel actually consists of four separate lots, but right now incorporates all of this property, what I believe has roughly twelve acres. But these are separate lots. They are not all combined at this point in time. So with that, the current in-ground pool is actually in a state of disrepair to the point that it cannot be repaired. The applicant came-
Where's, what lot is that property on itself then? Can you just-
Pardon me?
Which parcel of the whole area? It's just the north?
Yeah, that's actually, it's this area up here. And the nice color blue is the actual pool where they want to have it. This is made bigger down in this picture, so maybe even easier to define, because these are the property lines for that particular piece.
Thank you.
Even though they all know the rest of it. So the pool company had applied for it, and I had denied it, just as a little background information. I got ahold of them, and I said, you know, this pool currently is an non-conforming structure. Pools are accessory structures. Accessory structures by the ordinance can only be in a rear yard. So I said, unless, I mean, if you don't want to apply for a variance, then you might want to really consider rebuilding the pool that's there, because there is currently a pool in that same footprint. They laughed, they came back, and they said, we can't. This pool is so old, the pipes are disintegrated, most of them, half of are under the pool or around the pool. We just, we can't get to it to fix it. So that's why they're here this evening, is to have the pool. They really need to remove it and put a new one in. And I said, well, that's a violation of the ordinance, and that ordinance, number twelve sixty-eight point one three B, does not allow for accessory structure to be added, or the current pool is in a side yard. By the way, just for background information also, ordinance twelve fifty point oh four parent G includes swimming pools as accessory structures. So, you know, the pool is counted as an accessory structure.
Could you show why it's a side yard?
Yeah, I was going to get to that. So in that, it's only allowed to be in the rear yard. It's in violation now to, what you're asking here, John, is the definition of a front yard is from the building to the street. The definition of a rear yard is from the building to the rear property line. The rear property line is the line most parallel to the front property line and furthest away. So this becomes the rear, this becomes the front. That makes what's left a side and a side. So to be the ordinance, and I had this discussion with the applicant, the only place that pool can go is here. But that is a real practical difficulty. I, I'm not trying to plead your case, I'm all looking through the other on her own, but I kind of hopped in there, didn't I, a little bit? The way this floor plan is laid out, this part of the building is all bedrooms. This part of the building is all living area, and the only place they access any of the yards is here, here from there. So there's virtually no access to the rear yard area. So, you know, the logical place I think is to put it, but again, it's in violation of the ordinance.
But where is front entry to the house? Because I want S.
I'll show you. I'll tell you where it is.
The property, yes.
But it doesn't matter by the ordinance, because the ordinance doesn't say the front door has to face the front.
Well, but what has been the front orientation of the house?
What has been?
And is it what it's always been?
What still has is front is here.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. So what you have is a house that was built on this property, where the orientation doesn't really align itself with what the ordinance defines as a front being a front. Just as a side note, years ago, I found this out the hard way. I violated somebody for doing something in a lot that was on a corner. Even if it's on a corner, the front door does not have to face the front property. So there it is. This front faces the side. This is the front yard by definition, so therefore that are sides and this is the back. So that's why they're here anyway. They just, it doesn't need any definitions within the ordinance. So an accessory building should be located, rear yard, etc., would strictly attach to the main building. Obviously, you can attach a pool to the main building. Now, I mean, that's impossible to do. So the above pool is currently and is requested to be placed in a side yard. Any questions?
How long has this been in there?
Since before I got here, and I've been here twenty-three years, so that, that house has, I don't know when it was actually built, but it is pretty old.
It predates the ordinance.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it does, because it's got to be darn close, or even if it was, it's old enough that nobody paid any attention to it. There's a few around town that are that way.
Are there any neighbors that objected to them rebuilding that in the same side?
At this point in time, we have gotten no written indication of anybody. So I don't know if everybody in the audience or not, but we have gotten no written response.
Is, where does the required attractive nuisance fencing issue come in on all this?
You mean the fence that's running the whole length of the front of that property?
Well, is there, right now, the required fencing around that pool?
There's an existing non-conforming fence.
Yes.
That the owner, the builder, and everybody I've ever talked to, I told them, if you want that fence, you better not touch it, because if you knock it over, it's gone. That fence does not meet the ordinance.
Well, right.
Yeah.
Three different-
Where's the neighbor's property compared to the, where the pool is?
One neighbor's property is here. Another neighbor is, this way is way down here.
But what about with regard to the pool? Is there any neighbor that sees the pool, or would you just-
No.
Across the street, they may, if in fact the fence ever goes away. But you can apply conditions if you do decide to grant.
Right.
An approval.
Because the fence right now is a zero opacity solid post.
That's a privacy fence, which isn't allowing the front yard to start with.
Right.
So, yeah.
So, I mean, that, that's a question. If, if there's a new pool, will that then enact different fencing requirements as part of it? And should that be a part of-
Not quite, if there's an existing pool there.
There's an existing pool, but if the variance is for replacing that pool, will that then-
Does that have fences around it now? Not, not the big tall one in the front, but does it have a separate fence?
No.
No.
So there's two issues going on here. If, if in fact they do have fence, fences are allowed in the side yard. So they could put a fence and be at least fifty feet away from the street, and has to be behind this particular line, which I think they could accomplish. But the other part of that is, is the state law changed a while back, where pools, if they have a ASTM thirteen forty-six, I think, is that the number? I think that's the number for the approved cover, cover, safety cover. Fence is not required.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, wow.
Yeah.
The whole attractive nuisance thing is out the window.
Kind of.
Cool? Okay.
Yeah, the state changed it. I, I'm just telling you what it says. I don't agree with it either, but, you know, there it is.
Okay.
So, yeah, but as far as any neighbors around, there is no immediate.
And one of the reasons for having that side yard be off limits is to prevent the proximity to the neighbor, I would assume, originally.
I've heard the term uncongested spaciousness. A term of making sure you have area between your house and the next one over.
Which really, really doesn't occur here.
Setbacks are, are pretty much that for a reason, you know, open space.
Thank you.
It's, it's a really unusual piece of property, with a lot of really unusual things going on on it. Including the whole guest house. So-
Well, that received a variance a few years ago.
Okay.
Giving it up itself.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was before my turn?
So it is, and I'm telling my cables, so.
Got it.
Just won't-
So that had, for them to be able to put it in now, per ordinance, that that would have to be attached to the house some way?
If I can't do a pool, but it would have to be back here as a, an accessory. A pool is defined as an accessory structure.
Okay.
So any other questions? I'd be more happy to answer.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay, thank you.
Is the applicant here, or someone represent the applicant? State your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Mark Tapper. My address will eventually be three zero five four two Hickory Lane. First of all, thank you for taking the opportunity to meet with us tonight and my colleagues or associates that are helping me with this. My family and I are very much excited to be a part of the Village of Franklin community. My wife and two young children are optimistic or hopeful that we can figure out this pool situation, because, you know, that was probably the thing that children were most excited about when we purchased the property. As, as Bill mentioned before, you know, the orientation of the house, and, you know, because it was a remodel, it just, it sits perpendicular to the street, and as Ms. Novak asked, you know, it is directly, if you beeline from the front door to our backyard, that is where the pool is. And so, the pool was originally built, we believe, pre nineteen seventy, and so, for obvious reasons, as the pool contractor mentioned, we, it's just, the pool's not good. I was not anticipating building a new pool. I thought we were going to be able to rehab it and, you know, follow ordinance. Economically, I wish that was the case, to be honest with you. And so, but we're here now, because this is what the situation is. Then also, one other comment, which I don't think it shows on here, but as part of our expansion remodel, there is a part of the connected house that does block, does block the pool, and is kind of in, is in between the, the road, the fence, and, so there isn't any, you know, direct access. Sorry.
You have to give it to them.
Go, go, go ahead.
Go ahead and finish, and then-
Oh, sure. So just, this, as you can see here, this, this structure right here, which is connected to the home, blocks the pool, basically, from the street or anything.
Is that the currently, like, a pool house cabana room?
Yeah, it's like a cabana that's connected to the house that has a restroom, basically, facility in it.
That's the buil, the building ten o'clock in the pool.
Correct.
Okay.
Exactly.
Are you on-
That was made to be structurally attached to the house, so it wasn't access, was not an accessory structure. And it does meet the front setback.
Are you, is it okay to ask questions now?
Sure.
Where is your well located on the property?
Yeah, I'll-
And are you on the-
Can you guys introduce yourself for the record?
Yeah, is that okay?
Please.
Yeah. My name is Caitlin Faria. For the record, I'm a landscape architect. I'm representing the Tappers. This is my colleague, Josh Watson, with Stonely Construction. He's a landscape contractor.
Yeah, the well is located roughly about here in the property.
And are you on septic, or are you on the grinder pump system?
On the grinder pump system.
You are? Okay. So septic fields are not coming into play with this?
No, the grinder pump, I believe, is located this corner of the house.
And I believe we just replaced both, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, Bill, we had to put a second one in per the open county or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. The expansion created too much demand on the existing, I think we had to put a second one in.
I have a couple diagrams. I don't know if they were put in your packets, but it's on a game. Can I walk around and show them?
Can you make copies?
Are they in their packets?
No.
I don't know if they got it in their packet or not.
Okay. This is our resume. So I just want to show, just so it's a little easier, so you can understand, where the compliant location would be, just for reference. So this is considered front yard, like Bill said, this is all side yard, and then this would be rear yard. So we have that existing forest edge here, and also, all the utilities come in this corner. So, and as Bill had also mentioned, all the egress, all the bedrooms are at this east side of the home. All the egress is concentrated more towards the main part of the home. So putting a pool over here would just kind of be impractical for also, like, visibility reasons, too.
Yeah, and it's too far from where you-
Well, it's the main living area, you know, if they're trying to keep an eye on the kids, it's just not practical, and also with the woodlands. You'd have some grading situation. You usually take down trees to put a pool there, just from like, a practicality standpoint, but also like a site standpoint, it just doesn't make sense. I just want to note the egress locations, so you guys can see those. That's the front door, as Bill mentioned. Then there's sliding doors here, off kind of that main living area. Then there's another egress door here, but even from this closest point to that pool location I showed you, it's about seventy-six feet. So right now, the current pool is twenty-six feet. So it's much, it's much easier, obviously, for visibility and also for access for the pool.
Is the new pool, what's pictured on the diagram, is that the proposed pool or the current pool?
That's, yeah, that's the current pool.
That's the current pool. What, what is, is it the new pool, the same size?
Yeah, it would be, uh-
Same, same size, same location.
Yep, same location. The only difference would be, they're going to square that off, so it can accommodate that safety auto cover, that Bill mentioned. So if you can't do that with the current pool, huh?
There's a little L, there's a little L offshoot.
Yeah, stairs come out there.
So from a square footage perspective, it's actually a little smaller than the current pool.
Yeah, so there'd be a safety cover fall, but nothing would be bigger, like, towards the street front, essentially, to the west.
So since you are going to put that cover on it, you, are you going to get rid of the fence out front?
It was not our intention to get rid of the fence out front.
You know, and another huge reason, really, when, when that pool's looked at that, the existing condition of this pool, the big thing is it doesn't, hasn't, doesn't have a main drain that has the anti-entrapment. So that, I think, was required in every pool since twenty-ten.
Yep.
So that's like an international building code. So this, this pool is not compliant with that, also with bonding, so that prevents electrocution. So that pool doesn't have proper bonding. So it's, and also, like, structurally, from like a shell perspective, it has failures in the concrete, and I think it was a block. Like, it was, it was not gummy, like a traditional gummy pool would be today. So there's a slew of reasons why removing or replacing is just the safest option. I can pass these around if you guys want to look a little closer.
Okay.
Would you like?
Good.
Give me additional questions.
Any other questions?
Are you asking for discussion or questions?
Questions, any questions?
My only question is, it's, it's concurrent with the remodel, but has nothing to do with remodeling that you're doing. Bill, is that correct? This is a separate thing from the remodel.
It's a separate permit.
Right, separate permit, separate action. So if you didn't do the remodel, you'd still be doing, have to do the pool for the-
Safety and security.
Safety and, right, okay. I just didn't know if somehow they were linked together, that I couldn't fathom.
One did not predicate the other.
Okay.
I guess, you know, I get it. I drove by it, I drove in, I drove in the driveway today. So, I mean, I, I get it. I see what you're dealing with. I, I guess my biggest issue is that whole fence thing, because right now, you can't even see the pool in the side yard. But you've got the privacy fence next to the chain link fence, next to the vinyl coated chain link fence, and if you were to decide to take that down, that would change everything as far as visibility from the road. So I, I guess my concern would be, and, and obviously, this is not something that we could dictate, and I would imagine this is something you would want as well, but what are you planning as far as natural vegetation?
Can I preempt you on, or quick?
You, sure.
I, you and I are a hundred percent in alignment on the same page. We are, how many trees are we planting?
Eighty-five down that property line.
Trees to, to go down that property, past the-
Okay, so on this, on this map, can you show me where, because it's a big property.
So, which, here.
That's your driveway, yeah.
This is the, the current fence?
It runs all the way down.
So from the driveway, all the way down, we're planting, we're having trees planted.
You said eighty-five, you didn't say eight or five, right?
Eighty-five, ten to twelve foot spruces between the fence and the home, so inside the fence.
Are they staggered?
Yeah.
They'll be staggered.
Staggered and natural, but it'll create, you know, if the fence wasn't there, a screen in effect.
So, so were the fence to come down at some-
If it fell off or something, yeah.
Or-
We, we were having a screen in protection.
Disappear, okay.
What's, what's the road that runs the side?
Hickory. And I, this is probably not of the intention of this meeting, but the previous homeowner who purchased the property from, there were, there were, there were trees lined, and then he took them all out and stuff like that. So we are actually trying to restore the original integrity of the property. That's very important to my wife and I, to, you know, bring it back to how it was. I'm sure, as you can imagine, you know, eighty-five trees is not the most inexpensive thing in the world, but, so it, it may take six or eight months for us to, to do it, but it is our full intention in terms of our whole landscaping plan to, to do that.
Yeah, it definitely enhances the property.
Yeah, for sure. And I think the property, the community, I think it's the right thing to do. I was disappointed when I saw, you know, previous photos of what it was versus what it is.
Do you have any idea why he would have taken those out?
Um, I don't want to be on record saying this exactly. Okay, okay. He was, first of all, he was a, an amateur green thumb horticulturist. He had a vision for the property, that he was going to make some, like, type of Japanese zen garden thing going on. In addition to that, though, like, I don't think he really appreciated the, what the expectations of the community are, because like, he put this very inexpensive black chain link fence in, like, again, as a homeowner and someone that takes great pride in the property that he's, you know, assembling, like, I would never have, you know, done that. To me, it looks inexpensive, and it's not in, you know, connection with the community, so, or, you know, of, of the standards of the road. So he was just kind of, in my, from my interactions, very nice man, but he just kind of did things his, you know, his, his own way.
That, that encompasses the sport court or tennis court?
With the chain link?
No, the chain link, the black chain link.
Yeah.
It goes around the tennis court?
It goes all the way down.
Oh, okay, well, it's, it's allowed to go around the tennis court. Otherwise, chain link is prohibited.
This is in line with the privacy fence.
Sorry, sorry, there's, there's chain link around the tennis court, and then there's chain link down.
He didn't do that with help of a permit, then. Because they're not allowed, so, okay.
Yeah, that was in the area. Problem.
Let's get back to the pool, because defense question is really not relevant right now.
Um, except- It may have relevancy to what you were bringing, what Lyndon was bringing up, in that if something happens to it, it can't be replaced.
That's right.
So.
And then, right now, the pool is a non-issue, because it's behind the six-foot privacy fence, and besides us, nobody else knows about it. But if that fence-
Comes down.
Were to be knocked over by raging deer in the middle of the night, which could happen, then you got a whole different ballgame. You've got a pool that's a few feet from the road.
Ms. Novak, I would just, the only thing I would argue is, is that would be your view if the fence got knocked down. It would be of that, it would be of that roof structure. It would not be of a pool, though.
Yeah, it would be of the pool house in that addition. And then you'd also have that line of, that screen between the road and that pool house.
The pool goes further than that, that's not that big of a-
You almost have two barriers in there, right?
The structure ends-
Past.
Past the pool itself, for now.
As a straight on view, you're right. Like, going down Hickory?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
As a straight on view-
Yeah, yeah, yes, from the, yeah.
It's hard to gauge.
I know, I know.
Driving by.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's really covering the pool.
And this is all going to become part of the house?
It is already, yeah.
It is already attached to the house? It is an attached-
Correct.
heated part of the house?
Correct, yep, it's connected. And then, all the screening is going in here, like Bill said, kind of staggered. So you're going to have kind of a two-level buffer between the street and the pool at that point.
Great.
And the fence is, your intent is to keep the fence as it is, so.
I don't want to, I don't want to break anything, I don't want to touch anything, like, we were just going to plant next to it, just to, you know, you know, as I said, create the original integrity of the property.
So even if there was a stampede, that wouldn't be a problem, but-
But if it does, there's other, there's other pools in Franklin that you can see from the street, so that's, that's-
Yeah. I'm just asking the questions.
Okay.
That's all. It's me.
Anything else on the board?
Is this pool going to be gunnite, fiberglass? What's its new composition?
Gunnite.
So the traditional gunnite?
That's about my picture.
It's going to be, it's going to be a grade level, it's not going to be raised or-
No, I agree, gunnite, with an auto cover, with a safety cover.
Any questions? Thank you. At this, at this point, I'd like to open to public comments if there are any. We did receive one letter, but it was sent to, what was that, pink card? It was, it was sent to a mailbox that wasn't active, from Nina Downing, acknowledging that she was in favor of it, and I'd like to have that entered into the minute. And I'd like to have that entered into the minutes.
She, is she in the area, is she living in the area?
She is, Bruce, it's the street on the right side of the large apartment.
I don't know why, I don't get it.
So she's north of the property.
Oh, Nina.
So this is just subject property. She's, it's a house here, which is right where the north, here, so she's here.
Next to you.
So it really doesn't affect.
Pretty far.
Brandon? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Was that letter in opposition or in favor?
It's in favor.
It's in favor.
It's in favor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I'm not sure that people here heard that a public comment time was.
I'm sorry.
I'm not sure they heard you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry, I didn't hear you.
Public comment.
Public comment, right now, if you have any comments, it's open for public discussion.
Is there something you wanted to say?
Orientation with letters trimmed.
Charlie McNeil, Lebon Pond's view drive. I asked the question, what was gonna be the size of the pool and the depth? So that's what I just asked a young man. And was it gonna be leveled to the ground?
Could you, excuse me? You need to answer the board to her question, not just privately. We need to know what the answer was publicly. We need to address the questions of the board.
Yes, I'm so sorry. The homeowner asked a question about the pool, the size and also the depth of it, the new gunnite pool. And Josh had advised that the size is twenty-three by forty-three of the existing pool, and the depth was?
Three and a half to five and a half.
Three and a half to five and a half feet deep. Apologies for the sidebar.
Thank you.
Of course.
So anything changing on the pool at this point is taking that little L off the backside?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
And the addition of the safety auto cover. That's all integrated.
If there's no further discussions, should we go into finding of facts on this particular item?
Well, is there any discussion, we usually want around for discussion.
Yeah. You have any comments, please?
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I see this, the way I look at it is, this is, to me, a no-brainer. I mean, and it doesn't disturb anybody. If anybody had a similar situation as this house, I would think it would be okay. I mean, if we had to change, we changed the rules because of this house, I don't see that it would affect any other houses in, similar houses in that situation. I think that it's, you know, I think that it's fine. I don't see, I don't see a problem.
I have a question, Bill.
Yeah.
Is, this is just kind of a question of procedure. If we were to vote to pass this, would it be possible to add any kind of a condition that regarding the landscaping, that eighty-five trees must be planted along the road?
You have three criteria on a decision. You can deny the request, you can accept the request as presented, or you can approve the request with conditions.
Right, but is landscaping a condition that we could put on?
When you make it a condition, it becomes a condition.
Thank you, okay.
Now, the applicant has already indicated that's what they want to do.
Right.
We don't have an actual drawing to say this is what it's gonna be, but we have words that will be, X amount of trees will be planted. And how they're gonna be is grouped as natural as possible through the landscape architect. You could take that and you could do two things with it. You could require them to come back with a land, well, a couple of things. You could require them to come back with a landscape plan, or you could approve it with the condition that that landscaping will actually screen the pool area from any view of the public way, or just take them for their word, however.
I just think that it would save them in the future if that were to be done now.
Yeah.
Prophylactically, so to speak. It would save them in the future were the herd of.
Obviously, they're not gonna be done right now because they're still under instruction. They gotta, but before the pool would ever get a final approval.
Right, okay.
That would have to be in place.
Surrounding neighbors have all been given notice that this.
Thousand feet around the hole.
Nobody seems to have a problem.
There's hardly anybody there.
That's all we've received.
It's the other side of the street.
Are you gonna plant along this, I don't know, how to explain it, the bottom edge?
No, that's a whole nother piece of property beyond that.
Mark?
They own.
All the way.
All the way down here.
Okay, but we've got.
But they're saying from here on down, they'll be planting eighty-five.
Okay, so you won't be able to see it if you came up?
Yeah, even if you come up this way, well, more of an angle you get to it, the less you're gonna see it, because once you get in line with a bunch of trees, you can't see. It's, that would be more of a straight-on type.
Okay.
Which most of that is being blocked by the addition of the pool house attached to that.
Okay.
So I believe that it will be, if they're gonna plant that many trees, I kinda think that's gonna.
Come all the way down?
Yeah. But there, this neighbor here is way down.
Yeah.
Matter of fact, they have an accessory building here that actually would block part of it also, so.
Yeah, well, there's that whole guest house in there.
That's what this is.
And the tennis, I mean, if my eyes were that good, that from that far south, I could be disturbed at seeing a pool, I would be grateful, so.
Where's the tennis court?
It's south.
Tennis court's probably down this way.
Yeah.
I know it's past public comment, can I just show you something?
Sure.
So this was a 3D rendering from Hickory Road to Hickory Lane that is, that's what you're gonna see from the street level.
Okay, so that's your landscape rendering?
Yes.
Get the.
Just for the avoidance of that, I just wanted to.
Disease resistant, resistant trees.
Disease resistant trees.
And deer resistant.
No power up those doors, and that's very good.
So there's no power lines in there, where, they would be trimming them back either, right?
No, the power comes from the rear of the property, from the wood lot.
Okay.
Any further discussion, Joan? That being said, shall we move on to finding of facts on which we will base the decision?
Existing pool structure there, it's going to go into the same framework.
Replacing a pre-existing legally non-conforming structure, pool.
House orientation is, creates a challenge for locating a pool, alter the locations.
Right.
Will?
Homeowner is proposing an installation of eighty-five evergreen trees along.
Hickory.
The road. Hickory Lane.
I would say it's a large rectangular lot. However, the largest portion of the area is borders on Hickory Lane. And when the original house was built, it was not set with a front yard on Hickory Lane orientation. It was set with a side on Hickory Gray Lane, with the intent of making it, using part of the property, has a huge backyard.
And the addition that they're putting on actually covers a portion of the pool, you can't, is that right?
Provides screening, yeah.
Yeah, screens the pool.
But what I was getting to was it was not, the orientation of the house itself.
Has not changed. Has not changed.
No, the orientation of the house hasn't changed, and the way the house is, our legal definition of backyard would put it in the residential area, in the bedroom area.
Well, and in wooded.
With no, with no access.
And putting it, putting it in the, the legal, that's right, we're billed the designated backyard area would require removing trees.
Can we put in that homeowner is proposing a safety cover on the pool?
It's required.
Required by law.
They, now it's a law.
Oh, yeah, the ISPSC 2015 requires it.
Oh, even with no fence?
Right.
Either fence or cover.
I think a key point we need to put in here is that the problem is not self-created. That it was.
Pre-existing.
It was their, a pre-existing problem, and this is an attempt to solve the problem.
By the way, how far is the pool from the street?
More than fifty feet.
Yeah.
Other than that, I don't care. It meets the ordinance.
That's fifty-two. So it's probably, this is probably seventy-five-ish. The closest corner is roughly seventy-five feet by eyeball.
Seventy-five and a half feet.
Yeah, my eyeball is well-calibrated. Yep. Pretty good, huh? Paid good money for these eyeballs.
We do have a letter of support from a neighbor. There are no.
No objections.
No objections to it from any neighbors.
Yep.
Is it, should it be noted that the enhancements they're making are really, I mean, it enhances the property value? It's not disturbing the property value. The trees, the added trees are, as a result of the project, will enhance the environment.
Sure.
Any anything else?
Well, that's a finding of fact, but it is a fact or.
Any other comments or additions? You have enough facts on which to base the decision?
I believe there are.
Motion to accept this finding of facts on which to base the decision?
Okay, motion to accept finding of facts.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Based on the above finding of facts, I will entertain a motion.
Okay, motion to approve zoning board of appeals case number twenty-five dash zero zero six.
Based on the above finding of facts?
Based on the above finding of facts. Do you need me to?
With the condition?
Recite, thank you, Bill. With a condition of eighty-five trees being planted, and I would say evergreen trees, along the Hickory Lane side of the property, between the road, what are you doing? Between the road and the pool, sorry, we're.
On the west side of the property.
You keep sucking out the microphone.
Can't take you anywhere.
I know. By the way, if I, I just, I'm thinking, should the finding of facts be stated that there was no objections to the surround?
There was.
It's already in there.
Isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, I would like that condition on there. I don't think.
Within the next four months.
No, it'll be done as a condition that would have to be done before I could find the pool.
Before the pool is finalized.
Yeah, it's part of the pool.
Is that, is that reasonable?
Yeah, can we call it sufficient evergreen screening instead of an exact quantity of trees? Or at least?
I wouldn't necessarily recommend that without having a site plan defining where and what's gonna be there. I mean.
The number was mentioned to us.
Yeah.
We didn't give a number.
Okay.
So let's go with a number.
Sure.
Well, let's go with a minimum of.
Eighty-five?
Eighty-five.
Minimum of eighty-five.
I mean, Bill, you've got the experience, I'm gonna defer to you on this.
I, that's what they proposed.
Okay.
And if they wanna do something different than that, they have to make a request to come back and do something different.
We don't object to them planting.
I mean, they can plant as many as they want, if they plant a hundred, that's cool.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not gonna stop them, but they gotta do at least what was presented.
I mean, do you, do you have some other number that you're proposing?
No, that's what we've proposed, and we've cited them on a landscape plan, but we haven't gone to dig and plant them if we ended up with eighty-four due to existing roots in the ground. I was just, you know.
Okay, between eighty-four and eighty-five.
Okay. I'm somebody who excavates and plants trees.
Understood.
You know.
And you don't know exactly what size you're gonna get on it?
Or a big chunk of ledge.
We have a, we have a plan right now, but plans and, you know, reality are two different things when we start digging in the ground.
And so is what is appropriate vegetation for screening, if you get what I mean. Everybody's got a different idea what that is. So I would hate to say that you would take that because it's not real defined. And it leaves it up to subjectivity, where at least eighty-five trees, you know, you got a certain amount of.
Tell you what, I am a negotiator by nature and by career. Why don't we say between eighty and eighty-five trees and give us a little bit of room?
That's a good number, that's a good number.
Okay.
For ten footers.
Okay.
Then if I can suggest, would you specify eighty, and if they put more, then great. They can put eighty-seven, they could put a hundred and eighty, I don't care.
Okay.
Okay.
You got five.
Reasonable, okay, okay.
Please don't take more.
I'm counting.
Typically, zoning boards don't negotiate with the applicants, but, okay. Linda?
Yes.
Typically, zoning boards don't negotiate with the applicants, but in this case, I think it makes some sense, okay? So your condition is going to be that they plant at least eighty trees.
A minimum of eighty.
Okay.
Okay?
Seventy-nine, we see you again.
Don't you start.
We have a motion for floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Most in passes. Build your pool.
They don't need to dig a pool, then you get the old crap out. Get the backhoe started, move it. All right. Wait, we're not done yet.
Call me.
Okay.
I'll be in tomorrow morning, call me.
I'm moved, I'm moved that we accept the minutes from the previous meeting.
Second.
Move to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Did you approve the meeting dates for the 2020?
Is that something we need to approve?
What else is on?
Oh, Bill says we need to approve the meeting dates for 2026.
Yes, so.
Per, I'm moved, we accept the meeting dates.
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on, because, oh, this is for 26, okay.
Yeah.
I'm moved we accept the meeting dates for 2026, per the documented calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye. Opposed, nobody.
When is the, you said there is no December meeting?
There is, I'll take them on the agenda, and if they applied now, they wouldn't, we wouldn't have enough time to process.
Take them in.
Okay, and what is, I asked Evan this last night. What is the latest date that somebody could file for the January meeting?
I think it's the second week in December. But we already have them on a calendar out there. If you need to know that specifically, would you mind calling Jenna on Monday, she'll tell you exactly.
Okay.
But we need, backing up from the meeting date, we need to advertise fifteen days ahead. We need to mail out a thousand feet to everybody, we gotta put it in the paper. I've actually gotta have it and deny it, so I need a week or so to do that. So it's at least three weeks and sometimes four.
I'm moved we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor? Aye, meeting's over.
This wasn't part of the.
Well, what, meeting day?